We got a full house tonight, obviously. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I hope everybody has been dealing with the heat okay. And if anybody has lost power, I certainly hope we get it back soon. It's not pleasant weather, obviously, but other conditions. So we were just talking about how our weather changes across. So again, hopefully, everybody is coping okay. All right, I know we have a few folks that want to address the board this evening. We have some agenda items to go through first. So first off, we will call the meeting to order. All board members are present, with the exception of Steve Bowerman and Larry Catherine Bell. Both are excused, absent since the meeting. Okay, next up, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion in second, please, to approve the agenda for this evening? Motion by Chad Toll, support by Don Steeney. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Agenda is approved. Next, move on to the consent agenda. We have some action items listed there. Can I have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda? Action items, please. Motion by Barbara Hoover, support from Mark Davis. Any questions or comments on consent agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we'll call a motion to order. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We move on to regular action agenda next. So first up, we have some human resource items, some certified hires. So Aaron Armstrong, you'll be taking us through those.
So as many of you know that we had a dinner the other night, and sorry to miss the few of you that couldn't make it, but completely understand, so you've met quite a few of these people, but I'm just going to quickly go through them. First, I have Rebecca Bush, who we are recommending for hire to full orchestra at Baldwin Middle School. Becky actually was with us before in Huntsville, then went to California, then went to Jensen and now she's back, full circle. And we also have her twin sister Sarah in the orchestra program teaching, so we're really excited to have them both lead this charge. Grace Hedinger, who is a former business owner and kind of went back for a second career. This will be her first teaching job, but she's worked in schools while she was getting her degree, and she's going to be a business teacher for the high school. Emily Miller, who was an E D teacher for us all last year, is going to be working at the ECC in Jamestown Lower in 3rd special. Anne Takan, I'm sorry, Takan, she is going to be a Spanish teacher at the high school and at Baldwin Middle School. She has experience prior in Tri County High School. We have Hannah Kemper. Hannah Kemper is going to be a resource teacher at Jamestown Upper. She has experience in resource at Fenton and the Skegan Public, and actually, her last job in the Skegan Public was at a three by the building, so it just is a nice little switch for her. Amy Miller, who did student teaching last year in the fifth grade classroom at South and came highly recommended from her operating teacher, Ann Mark Heagle, will be taking a second grade position at Allworth. Emily Peterson, who has nine days' experience teaching English at Black River in Holland, is coming over to teach English and drama at the high school. Danielle Freeman, if that means familiar, because you see it on the record board still at Huntsville High School. She was a side row swimmer and a Hupsie grad, obviously. She has been teaching at the Ottawa Area Center and in A S V Middle School High School Room, and now she'll be teaching in the A S V Classroom at Allworth. Andrew Garrett, who taught Eagle Virtual for us last year and then also did a long-term position last try at the high school, will be taking over in social studies at the high school. Emily Anderson, who did an internship last year with Erica Hawke, highly recommended from Erica, and then also Melissa Bernard, who was, you know, met with her quite often within the counseling realm, is going to be a guidance counselor at Riley Middle School. And then Angie Reynolds is going to be recommended at Georgetown and Park in a .5 special position. She did a lot for us in the last, throughout the years, as a long-term sub. So a lot of cases we recognize, some new ones, are very, very excited to present these new hires to the board.
Do you want to cover the certified staff change now? We'll take a second motion on that.
Oh, we can.
We have the certifies.
Yeah, the certification, if you could just do it all together, that's great.
Go ahead and cover that now, will you?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I have a motion in second, please, to approve the certified hires as reviewed by Aaron Armstrong. Motion by Don Steeney, support from Chad Toll. Any questions or comments on our new hires?
Well, I have a couple more for our next board meeting already, but it will be a total of 42.
Forty-two, and how many new hires?
So we've had a lot of resignations, so it's just been a lot of movement this summer.
And how many positions do you have left?
We, well, we have a .6 choir, but we did the interviews today, so, yeah, we're looking really good. Yeah.
All right, other questions or comments from the board? We have a motion on the table. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have band instrument purchase recommendation. Anne, would you take this one?
Thank you, yes. A recommendation is to purchase band instruments from Meyer Music of Dan Rapids in the amount of $78,019 for the high school marching band. If approved, the purchase will be funded by the Huntsville Village. Our recommended vendor, Meyer Music, that due to the pandemic, their estimated delivery time is one to three months for brass. We've got a good history with Meyer taking care of our bands. This is seven of the top 10 items that our band department has stated as a need. If this is approved in the next couple of weeks, I'll start another, we'll bring those other items to the board. This, said this is going to be for the Huntsville Village, and there really is a need for our bands to operate for it. We did get five bids, and this is our recommendation there.
I have a motion in second, please, to approve the band purchase recommendation as being by Pat Briggs. Motion by Barbara Hoover, support from Don Steeney. Questions or comments on the instrument purchase?
Anne, just to clarify, so this is a replacement of some of the older models that didn't come with this?
Yes. There are some plates, marching tubes, we don't have enough, so even the ones that we're going to replace, we're going to replace some, a lot of the better equipment we have moved down to the middle schools, a few of these need to be retired.
Pat, you and I talked about this the other night a little bit, but we have a plan from the band department for replacement of instrumentation, and this is part of that.
Yes, you're right.
Other questions or comments? You have a motion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item number three, M dot performance resolution. Anne, would you take this one here?
Thank you. So this is an update resolution. The prior resolution was from 2012, and there are just some changes in the law specifically that have to do with all harmless, other things across the right-of-way, our insurance information. What this, what this does is it puts in place an operational agreement, because it seems like every project we have, we need to get some kind of permit or some kind of easement or something to get into the trunk liner right-of-way to the state. So this, so when the state, the people in various departments see that we have this agreement in place, they will be able to write the permits. Right now, we are looking for a permit to be shipped from the high school to the tower by the dealership of the highway, and we need to get it into the state in a term like in my one percent.
Okay, motion in second, please, to approve the M dot resolution as reviewed by Pat Briggs. Motion by Chad Toll, support from Don Steeney. Questions, questions or comments? Again, Pat and I talked about this a little beforehand, but standard language, no surprises in this, consistent with what has been done to us. Other questions or comments from the board? All in favor of a motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next up, board policy revisions, second reading.
Thank you. The policy committee had reviewed policy 2266 as well as the first meeting of the board. This is the NADIS-GRAD nation, one of the NADIS-GRAD policies, and on page 11, it just writes a sentence that there's no longer needed in there, and we're asking to move it. So there's no changes from the last, from the first reading of the policy committee. If approved, then we'll move that policy meeting.
Okay, motion in second, please, that the board approve the second and final reading of the revisions to the board policy 2266. Motion by Mark Davis.
Support.
Support from Barbara Hoover. Any questions or comments? All in favor of a motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, we move on to report items. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll carry quick. I just want to give a quick update on kind of what the summer looked like, and kind of where we are moving forward. I'll see if this works here. So over the summer, we spent a lot of time still dealing with the impact of COVID-19, managing conversations we recognize, social distancing, cleaning protocols, all the things that we thought last year was the last time we'd be dealing with that over the summer. But we spent a lot of time this summer still dealing with that. And those conversations are, as a lot of you here know, still on both. A lot of time with dealing with staff, and want to thank Ann and her staff, and bringing all, many new staff on board through our administration. We met our new administrators that we have, we met our new athletic director, Mr. Smith Athletic Director, we met Mr. Principal at high school. They've been working hard, and we started off the year, even helped the kids help show up for another 10 or 11 days. And in full disclosure, when I wrote this, like, there were 39 in the staff, and then you asked about 42, so. But we actually had to meet a lot of them the other night, very excited. Ann did a great job with her team, and a lot of our administrators have helped out with professional learning with those new administrators. Just walking them through the district, so they've had about, I'd say, two and a half solid days of, we call it, new teacher training. I haven't yet discussed a little bit more about it, but very excited. They are, you know, they're ready for the kids to show up, which is so great. School calendar, as you know, we start on the 23rd. The first whole week are half-days, Monday through Thursday, and I'm hoping it'll be 65 cloudy next day, but I don't know what's going to happen. We'll play it by ear and do the best we can to make sure our kids are ready to do it. And I do want to thank K M Taylor, Craig Stienstra, and the instructional technology team. They've been working countless hours preparing our entire district for the one-to-one initiative that we instituted last year in the middle of a pandemic, trying to get devices and then getting kids used to them and so forth, and they've been working really hard, getting ready for what that looks like for this coming, this coming fall, when all the kids come back, they will have their devices. It's been fun watching the technology department try to turn those over, get them ready for the kids. Just a quick update on enrollment, here where we are as of a few days ago. Right now, our elementary buildings, as you know, most of the buildings on the north end of the district are at capacity. We've added two more affordable to the Bauer campus, we have two at Georgetown. We're up about 145 kids. Just to give you some context, that's about six new classrooms of kids, but they're not all, it's not necessarily six, because they're spread off into the district, so it's impacted a lot at the elementary level. Our middle school is down 46, the high school's up 110. If you remember, it's the eighth-grade class that are now ninth graders. That's the group that was all-day, everyday kindergarten, that used to be half-day kindergarten or part-time, and so there's a huge influx in the ninth-grade class. So the high school, thanks, Mr. Beal, you have the largest high school that we've had ever, at Huntsville High School, there's about, just over 2,100 students. Overall, the district is up about 209 students, I will tell you. That is projected enrollment. We still have people that will show up on day one that didn't know they had to pre-register and go from there. I would tell you that is not physical count, but we'll have that. Just an update on construction, so the 5-6 building, I'm going to show you some pictures in a minute, but the 5-6 building, if you still drive down 36, you'll see a lot of progress on the Wesco gas station, but it doesn't look like there's a lot of progress on the new 5-6 building. Trust me, there's a lot of progress, you just can't see it, because it's, as we talked about, it's buried in the ground. You'll see that in a minute. The high school, the choir room is coming along nicely, they're going to start tiling the outside, air hanging units did come in last week, and that will be hopefully ready by the Christmas time or the end of the calendar year. The connector has a lot of steel, and I'll show you some pictures of that in a minute, that's coming along nicely. In the fieldhouse, if you driven down 32nd, there took a lot of effort, that was over there. The tennis court entrance has been, has been added, not done yet, obviously, we'll try to get that done by October. We do have a shutdown in front of the freshman campus, so really, it's, you can't really get into the freshman campus from either direction right now for today and tomorrow, because they're running the water line through there for the connector component. We had to loop that around, because we no longer can loop underneath. There used to be a water track that went between the two buildings, but because of the physical structure there, we had to loop that in a different way. So that's why there's a lot of, a lot of construction, it's hard to get around that campus, at least today and tomorrow. We'll get that figured out by the time the kids show up. We will. Kids will figure it out, they'll just park in their ass. The Forest Grove Gym, we're getting ready to go to bid for the Forest Grove Gym, probably in the October-November timeframe. The, we've had the final design for that gym, it would be nice to be on the far west side of the building. There are some elevation challenges there, but we think we've navigated those nicely. A lot of that, that's where the arcti in here, the instrumental is up from there also. Well, I've been asked about the monument sign at Baldwin Middle School for the last two years. I can say that that's coming along nicely. We had to replace that monument sign, there was no way to refurbish what was there. In the process, we're putting monument signs generally at the Baldwin campus, that would be a monument sign at Bauer Elementary School, early childhood center, Riley and Jamestown Upper, Jamestown Lower, Forest Grove. Forest Grove, for those that, Americans, they care, but are in that area, it's actually on Perry, not on 32nd, primarily because of the speed on 32nd and the entrance to where the parents park, because I'll prepare it to be whatever way to make it out, since it's still still kind of mine. Those are spec-ed out, and it's about a six-week deprecation, so we hope to have those up and running in October-November timeframe, go from there. And then, as all of this work is going on, this current year, we start diving into the design work from Bauer Elementary and Park Elementary. Do you remember, Park Elementary is a major renovation, because of the classrooms, it includes interior classrooms that are going to be renovated, as well as the gym being added to that facility. Bauer Elementary has a gym added also, and because of how much Bauer is growing, we have to add on to the building, so there's going to be a lot of work taking place with those two buildings. And that, I know there's some other odds and ends that take place. Georgetown's parking lot is getting redone to allow for a larger capacity for pickup and drop-off for parents. We have some other odds and ends with some of the window treatments at Jamestown Upper. A water thing we're trying to fix at South, I mean, some odds and ends, but for the most part, those are the, that'll conclude most of the bodywork that we're doing, hopefully by the year 2025. Will be done? 26? 27? So just a few pictures. We'll probably start again, we'll figure it out. So there'll be something else, that's a good point. So just some quick pictures. I don't know, I know there's somebody back there that can turn the lights off, it looks better if they have them like that. I'm looking at a gentleman right by the clock. That's perfect, that's good too, but that's fine. Quick pictures, this is what the site looked like when they first started moving some dirt. You can't really see the elevation changes, but now you can see, this is what it looks like from above, and if you drive by, you only see the front bricks, you don't see the footings. And just for the sake of showing this, because I think this is at least something very positive going on for all of us right now, this is what's considered the academic wing. There are pictures on one of these drawings, I think it's, it's one of these, it's over here, right at the corner. There you go. You're hired. This is the academic wing that forks up two ways, there's two large group construction rooms that are here, this will be two stories. This is two stories also, but you have the main cafeteria, the gymnasium is back here with locker rooms, you have the band. I'm going to say band and music, because keep in mind, it's a 5-6 building, fifth grade is music, sixth grade is paint, right? So, and we want to be consistent with the north and south part of the district, so we're navigating that. So until we have another 5-6 building on the south end of the district, which I can't really speculate when that will be, but when we do, that, that might change, so we want to make sure the building is flexible, it's be consistent district-wide, because it doesn't matter what building your child builds to, but we have flexibility in the future, so we could, that, design two buildings with similar footprints, to be consistent both of the time. But none of this you can see when you drive by, and they won't let you drive back, we aren't supposed to drive back, but you can see the road, they started to design the road back here. For those that remember, there's staff parking in back, we have a couple of fields that will be put here. The cross-country course is being created, which is great, because they can't run that here anymore, because of wetlands, it's actually created over here, we own all this property here, so we're actually, of course, of course, it'll be up there also, so we'll be able to post duels at the conference, and then they've been reached out based on the facility. They might not, might not let us have any ask anymore, they've reached out to see if we can work on how to support it, that state cross-country, which will be very exciting. But this is 32nd along here, you have parent parking here, staff parking, and then buses will drop off here, but then there's a loop back here that'll take us right to Baldwin and to Georgetown without going up 32nd, or, or Baldwin. I know that's a lot. Just another picture of kind of the design, you can see the, what that looks like from one side, you can see the, there's two baseball fields, softball field to the far left, you see the field ball field, and at the distance, you see Georgetown and Baldwin. And I'm apologizing to those in the back that can't see, all of these are on our website, I'm going to show you in a minute, so if you want to look at them later, you can look, you can make them your team member. So here's the, here's the choir room, this is, picture was taken actually a while ago, because now the walls are completely up and the rough is going on, so that gives you an idea of where the choir room is located. The exciting part about the choir room is it does complete our fine arts suite at the high school campus. So now we'll have choir, a band is to the left, you can't see orchestras on the far side, but now the hallway behind the auditorium was right there, which will complete the loop, so that you can have all your fine arts right there with the auditorium right there. Here's a look at the connector when they first started. If you know, not that everybody knows, but we have about 600 to 650 kids every hour that transition between the two buildings, and this will be an opportunity to put them closer together and keep them indoors. And it's great on nice days, but as you know, in Michigan, not all days are 65 and sunny. On the right-hand side, that, that kind of bat area is the main offices, that will be the main offices for the high school, which will include the principal, all the assistants, and the main office area. On the left-hand side, will be council offices, which will be all the counseling and some insular staff will be there also. The hallway will connect into that same location. We actually have eight classrooms everywhere, three downstairs, five upstairs, with a large group construction area upstairs also, gives an opportunity for Mr. Beal to have 120 staff members up there for staff meeting, keeping them there. So that's a more recent picture, quite frankly, it was taken yesterday, given ideas, the steel where it is, and one thing that we may notice, we will notice, is that this, this area here used to be the entrance to the gym, and this door right here is actually the door into the gym. So kids will not be using that door to get into the gym, but we have fire escapes, or fire exits that are already put in place, where the kids will be using the gym. This is the entrance, this will be all closed, and if you remember, we're actually building a sidewalk or a hallway on the far west side of the building, so that'll complete the loop. So for those that ever went to Huntsville, know what's four corners is, if you have high school kids, they know what four corners in which 2,000 kids see each other every hour on the hour. Now there'll be a loop, so that the traffic will flow much easier. That hallway will start to go up next summer, just a couple other quick pictures over there. Another look at the other side, you can see kind of where the parking lots are, and kind of see the auditorium and so forth, and all the steel structures that are going up. So they're making great progress there. I'm going to tell you they're ahead of schedule, because I can tell you that with all the construction people in the room, they'll never tell you they're ahead of schedule, but they're doing great. If you look at the fieldhouse area, this is a beautiful fieldhouse, this is our current fitness center, which was moved into the property of purchase years ago, so right now, this is our fitness center here. This area, just to give you some understanding, these are the footings for the side of the fieldhouse, these are the footings for the other side of the fieldhouse, and it comes all the way out to within about six feet of this building. So that's the structure that goes in there. Again, this is similar to the 5-6 building, it's built into the ground, so the entrance, when this is all parking in the future, you walk in from the second floor, but if you're in, if you're a student or you're an athlete, you actually would, downstairs would be where you'd walk into these doors that go actually, so they'll be up there. They're moving a lot of dirt, we are creating, student parking will be up here, they're going to clean this up a little bit, so there's additional parking for students. I suggested maybe kids don't drive next year, that hit open well for my 17-year-old, and he does a good idea, so yes, kids will be able to drive to school. But they're creating a fence line here, and a fence line from the field that go right in, that go right into the school over here. And we are creating an additional entrance over here, and this is getting closer to done, that will be, technically, will be the main entrance for students in the morning or during the day to come in here, when they park up on the, on the south end. Think that is, oh, there's one more. The whole campus. Lots of dirt. And there's, if you can see closely, which you really can, I don't have a neck in them yet, there's actually a fire hydrant in the middle, they had to get, it's a whole issue of water, but they're moving, they can have a fire hydrant in the middle of the field, of course, so they're moving a fire hydrant. So if you do go to our website, there's a blog, it talks about updated construction, I encourage people to go look at it. The nice thing about this, it's updated quite regularly, gives you some views on what the building will look like when it's done, just another approach to, you know, the entrance, the drop-off, what that'll look like, the entrance to the main, the bridge, what it'll look like, that the kids will cross back and forth, the entrance to the fieldhouse, what that'll look like, kind of some just renderings. You have a fitness center over here, you've got a new wrestling room in the back. We actually have three courts in the main gym, if you remember, we actually have another aux court on the back side, which will be up over here, which will actually be marked for tennis, so we can have more sports and more opportunity to do things that are in the facility. Just a quick update on our construction, enrollment, and that is my report.
Okay, that's it? You know?
And unless there's any questions from the board?
All right, thank you, good report. Okay, at this time, we open up for those who would like to address the board with comments. So a few reminders, please state your name, we have one already up here. State your name, state your address as well, comments will be limited to three minutes. I know we have a number of folks that want to address the board this evening. I also, I know, the board knows that these are emotional and passionate topics, and people have strong feelings about it, but I'm asking that you refrain from applause, because that's just, we want to hear from people, and that just slows the process down, we want to respect everybody's time, and so that just slows things down, we want to give them. So with that, you're first up, we'll work our way across the room, for those that want to speak, and so as soon as Dr. Vanderjack gets the timer up, it's in 30 minutes, give us one moment, please.
Louder.
Louder. Yeah.
Just speak up, please, it's a full room, it's a group sum, yep.
I'm here to shake you the task, I'll leave you just to bear with me, 23 minutes, it's painless. At the last meeting, you treated the audience like naughty children with a timeout, merely because they applaud you, and what was said by one of the speakers in an effort to let you know that there was widespread agreement in the room, what was expressed. What you did could be called bullying, but was surely tantamount to repression of free speech. Even this limited venue here tonight could be construed as an attempt to suppress term. We're here as parents, taxpayers, and citizens of the Huntsville Public School District, exercising our God-given First Amendment, free speech rights, given to us by the Constitution. New York Times versus Sullivan was a landmark First Amendment Supreme Court case in 1964. Justice William Brennan wrote the majority opinion in it, he cited Justice Louis Brandeis in his concurring majority opinion in Whitby versus California, who gave the principle of free speech its classic formation, and I quote, "Those who won our independence believed that public discussion is a political duty, that this should be a fundamental principle of the American government, believing in the power of reason..." Believing in the power of reason as applied through public discussion," listen carefully now, "they eschewed silence coerced by law as being the argument of force in its worst form." Get that? "They eschewed silence coerced by law as being the argument of force in its worst form." Unfortunately, that's exactly what you did, that we, continuing to quote, "Thus we consider this case against the background of a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, wide open, and that may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." End quote. I chair a planning commission, conduct monthly meetings, and have been subjected to some of those unpleasantly sharp attacks at one time or another. I survive it just fine, you know? Your actions at the last meeting were ill-advised and actually unlawfully limited rights accorded thus by the Constitution of the United States and the Supreme Court of the United States.
Amen.
I would strongly advise and request that you do not engage in similar actions tonight or in the future. I would respectfully and kindly, kindly suggest that if you can't stand the heat, maybe it's time for you to consider getting out of the kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, again, I'll kind of work around this way here. So next comment from over here, anyone? Okay. And we'll kind of work through, again, raise a hand. I'm sorry. Should have said that. Raise a hand if you'd like to make a comment. I see a hand up in the back there. A gentleman, yes, yep. Again, please state your name and address and.
My name is Ellen Hudsonville. I was a high school social studies teacher for nine years in the district. Over 90% of students below the poverty line. I have a master's degree in educational leadership. I led the classroom five years ago. He is a former business owner. My wife was a former teacher in the district, but most importantly, I'm a father of three. As a former educator, I can understand how things can happen in the classroom that can be misrepresented by the teacher, or the center, misconstrued in class, especially when they tell their parents. I'm also aware of the pressure that you guys are under by the government, state and federal in regards to risk-based education. Having this knowledge, I would like to give Dr. Vanderjack and board the opportunity to address my concerns. What is D I V? What does it teach? So far, my knowledge, the board, Dr. Vanderjack, not provide the curriculum that was taught to the staff during professional development. D I V is not critical race theory, as you say, then we love the opportunity to see why. I believe this lack of transparency has had a lot to do with the confusion and resentment on both sides of the community. So let me be clear about one in four of one of the guests. I agree with the outspoken liberal, Bill Maher, crazy guy, real liberal, but when he said on his show this week, trying to define critical race theory. If you ask me, what is critical race theory and what does it mean? If CRT means to teach history and varnish, I'm for that. Does it mean teaching racism still exists today? Yep, I'm for that. However, CRT means making our children in schools fixate on race, I'm not for that. If it's about collective guilt, I'm not for that. I didn't do anything to anybody's great-grandfather and I will not be responsible for that. If it's about the toxicity of being white, if it's about dividing people into oppressed or oppressed, I'm not for that. End quote, Bill Maher. You could call this teaching critical race theory, D I V, or whatever you want to call it, but I'm against race-focused education. This does not mean that I want to admit any historical facts that changed American history in any way. I taught for nine years. I believe 100% that we should teach American history and check the past, the exceptional and not-so-exceptional. I know the CRT is often dismissed as conspiracy theory, Fox News, but I've had several former students, they've had deep critical race theory in college. Several of my former students were white, told me that part of the class needed to go around the room and apologize for being white or to recognize their privilege. And I've also taken a look at the race-based stuff that's coming down from the state. And I feel that we should be putting more emphasis on core curriculum. As economists and philosophers have a soul, much of social history in the West world in the past three decades has been replacing what worked for what sounded good. You can call this ideology, whatever you want, but as a parent and teacher for nine years, I reject the premise it's a good idea to teach students that their immutable quality of race is the most important quality in every situation they encounter can be explained by race. I love to see how any hard evidence on how this indoctrination includes mass skills, literacy breaks, or any aspect of education to minority students or white students. I also reject the premise and ideology of teaching kids to be nice. Just an idea of teaching kids to be nice. Race-based gestures against each other, and I see no niceness for making people a politician for later.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay. Who else would like to address the board? Again, I'm kind of working across the room. I see a hand up here, gentlemen. Again, your name and your address.
We started off big about.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm Daniel Hernandez. I live in the drain on the Chester Street in Hudsonville. I wasn't planning on speaking, especially, or again, you were two to nine expressed, but I'm not going to take 30 minutes. I am maybe unique in this room. I happen to be an American citizen and a Mexican citizen. And I think that shows evidence here that maybe unique in this room, I have a choice. Like, I'm not like a celebrity or whoever. I don't like the president, I'm going to move to Canada. I can, and I choose to be here because I like all of it. I like it. I think it's great. I was moved to speak because of the critical race theory here, because I am a father of four kids. And if you have seen Canelo Alvarez, you know that Mexicans, their pigmentation can vary. And so I have kids that are a little bit darker, maybe even than me, and some bleached, right? So the idea, first of all, that, you know, Catholics have been trying a long time to get original sin brought back into schools. And now we've done it. That you have been born guilty because of the color of your skin, I don't like it. And I don't want to be put in the position to tell my kids that their teachers don't know what they're talking about. Because to have my kids look at their siblings and think they were born gifted something that was taken from them, I don't like it.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Oh, you're right here.
Hi, I'm Jay Hernandez. I live off Jasper Drive in Hudsonville, right next to the new building. I'm super excited. Well, I want to talk today about masks and the plan to make masks optional. I feel like it goes against the guidance of the Centers of Disease Control and American Pediatrics. It ignores the science on COVID transmission and kids and the effectiveness of masks. It fails to give our youngest kids who are not yet vaccine-eligible but will be soon a chance to evade infection after a year of sacrifice that we've all made. All available evidence suggests that COVID has spread wildly through schools without mitigation efforts that includes universal masking. CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics agree. Both agencies have early guidance indicating that schools should mandate masks for students, staff, and visitors. As local leaders, you really should listen to them. I know that you are looking at Ottawa County Health Department, but I think it's really important that you take into account Centers of Disease Control and American Academy of Pediatrics. Our, our category has now moved to high risk. And so because of that and the fact that the anticipation of new infections and hospitalizations has shifted downward, it's really only going to get worse if kids return to school without required masking, especially for those who are 12 and under. The science is clear on COVID, COVID in kids. Children can be affected with COVID, can get sick and die of COVID, and can spread the virus to others.
No.
While kids are less.
Here's, speak please. Thank you.
Where's your science?
Let's have your speaker speak.
While kids are less likely than adults to experience severe illness or death, the long-term consequences of COVID infection on neurological, lung, metabolic, and cardiovascular function are still unknown. Recent studies estimate that anywhere from 10 to 45% of kids under 12 who are infected with COVID experience long-term symptoms that last more than five weeks after the diagnosis, even if they only experience a mild acute infection. This is all to say that kids have not been and will not be spared in this pandemic. Thankfully, over the last year and a half, we have learned a lot about how to reduce that transmission, and masks have emerged as particularly important scientifically proven mitigation strategy. I will send you all of my links to prove all of the science as well. The proven effectiveness of masks, a key reason, kind of CDC's and American Academy of Pediatrics' current recommendation that students and staff continue to wear masks during the 2021, 2022 school year. Again, the science here is clear reopening schools without mask mandates and other mitigation efforts are in place while the Delta variant surge results in high levels of transmission and infection in kids, which confirmed contributes to household community spread, even among the vaccinated. In fact, I had to test myself for COVID even though I have been vaccinated because I got a cold and I was scared of people who were vaccine because they were unvaccinated, and I had to go get a test for myself.
Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to address the board? I mean, kind of working across. All right. I see a gentleman way in the back there with your, in the hallway there.
My name is Dr. Steve Exwell. I'm a board certified chartered to be here practicing in Hudsonville since 2002. I believe in, in God, we trust everybody else, bring data. So let's talk data. Want to follow it? Anyone wants to provide us some? Regarding masks, masks do work, then the problem is we don't wear them properly. I did my own survey in my office. Problem is, last fall I did this survey, 47% of people wore disposable masks. How often do they change it? Only 35% did daily. 10%, excuse me, 35% did. 33% did weekly, 8% bi-weekly, 15% monthly, 10% always used the same mask. 66% of the people wore cloth masks. How often do they wash them? Only 29% daily, 42% weekly, 13% bi-weekly, 9% monthly, 9% never washed them. So these are health-conscious adults. Put that in school and it's, even if you know how to use them, they negate the effectiveness, even if there are any effectiveness. A study published in the Journal of American Medical Association Pediatrics Section on June 30th, 2021 concluded that children should not be forced to wear masks due to the increase in carbon dioxide levels in both inhaled and exhaled air while wearing them. This study found an average of 13,120 parts per million and 13,910 parts per million carbon dioxide in the inhaled air by children while wearing surgical and filtered masks respectively. They found carbon dioxide increased the younger the children were. Seven-year-olds levels measured 25,000 parts per million. According to the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, the recommended CO2 level in buildings should be no more than 1,100 parts per million. They also cited another study that analyzed data from nearly 26,000 students and found that 68 of them experienced adverse effects while wearing masks. Aside from that, lungs are one to two times faster than any other chemical buffering system that you have in your body. Any physiologist in the textbook will show you that really quickly. Impairance CO2 elimination can lead to respiratory acidosis, which symptoms are confusion, anxiety, easy fatigue, lethargy, charlatism, sleepiness, tremors, warm and flushed skin, and sweating. Children should not be wearing masks. All of us know that children under the age of 18 statistically have 0% risk of death from COVID-19. Research published in Australia, France, Ireland, the Netherlands, Germany, found negligible transmission of COVID-19 in school settings. The Times of London reported that one UK's key epidemiologist had said nowhere in the world has been reported that a teacher caught COVID from a student. And you know how many kids, do you know how many kids in staff are artificially immunized from vaccine or six times stronger immunized from contracting the virus? Those numbers have to be taken into account. What else? Health advisor, Dr. Anthony Fauci said, hopefully making young kids wear face masks won't have any long-lasting impact on them. He's experimenting with our kids. He's ignoring the data. The CDC is lying to us, and the president thinks 105% of the United States is vaccinated. And child maltreatment, physical.
And sir, you can please, please spread up your comments, professor.
And psychosocial maltreatment of collective child or children, especially by a parent or caregiver. Child abuse may include an act of failure to act by a parent or a caregiver that results in actual or potential harm to a child that can care at child home or in organizations, schools, or community that child interacts with. Michigan Child Protection Law requires that certain professionals to report suspicious suspicion of child abuse from a collective essential intake or at the Department of Health and Human Services. Now you understand more about the rules, and I have copies right here for you. If you force masks on my kids or in numerous patients that I have in the school system, I consider abuse and I am obligated to report that.
Thank you for your comments. We move on to, I see a hand. Yeah, where you speak at.
Hi, I'm Josh Williams. I live off Court 14th. I am a trauma surgeon, and at times I have to be brave in rooms I don't want to. The case is that I often have to try to make sense out of chaos when I enter a room. I have to be the leader in the room, and I implore you to also be the leaders in the room and try to make sense of chaos when it comes to mask wearing and keeping our children safe in mass school. The leading cause of death in children is trauma. Okay? Would you put your children in a car without their car seat, their car seatbelt, without wearing their seatbelts? You wouldn't do that. Drowning is included in trauma. Would you let your young child go into the lake without supervision? This isn't something that any of us as, as parents could do. You would uphold our duty as the adults, as the parents, to take care of our children and keep them as safe as we can. Masks are an opportunity to keep our kids safer. This is one of the best ways that we have to mitigate children. Now, right now, we have the Delta variant. It is 90% of the cases of COVID out there. You may see some data that says go to in this county, to in this county. They are not asking every case to determine what the variant is. We have enough of a sample size now to determine that 90% of the cases are Delta variant. This is the most transmissible form of COVID that we have seen. It is also affecting children more than any other variant has affected. So these, you know, our children are at more risk than they have been since March 2020. I have been wearing a mask, a double mask, and a 95 all day, every day for over a year. It is not that hard to do, and it can protect our children. This is a simple thing. It's not asking a lot to wear a mask. And wearing masks, both us and you, protects our children. It's hard to see the lives we save by wearing masks. It's hard to see an epidemic event, right? An event that doesn't happen. I hope none of us have to look at our children and look them in the eye and say, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I didn't have this family. I'm sorry I wasn't ready enough. I'm, I'm sorry to not be able to see because there are some people out there who are having to see that, and I hope that's none of us.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we move, I see a hand up right here. Again, folks, I'm just kind of moving across this way, so be patient. We'll get to you.
Mary McGallory, I'm also on Cory Point Court, 960 Cory Point Court. So my son's eighth grade math class had a race relation discussion and assignment of what he would do to make the world more racially just. His ELA class was more of a class on gender studies than anything on reading and writing comprehension. He was given book reports for books on racial police brutality from books that turns out this board didn't approve his curriculum. Yet I keep hearing how Hudsonville has not lost its focus on academics, how we don't teach CRT ideology here. But Board of Education, over four months, you can sign laws. You've ignored emails, most of you. You refuse to discuss this matter in front of us in public meetings. I thank all of you for your years of service, and some of you have responded at least many places, but most of you haven't. And I thank all of you for responding when you have. And I'm sure you've done responsible, good things in the past, but unfortunately, though, this is now going to be your legacy of court members. This is what this community will remember you for your time serving on this board and what your tenure meant on this board if you do not acknowledge it. By now, you're all well aware of Newman's categorical statements about all white people holding a ticket in mind that others don't hold, being blinded by their privilege and his strong CRT beliefs, his need to dismantle and reconstruct our institutions in America. And this board allows it to keep continuing at our tax expense. And some of you expect this to bring more unity instead of division. Dr. Vaynerjack said at the June work session meeting in this room that we would pause it and reevaluate the initiative within SOAR, and this relationship with Newman could possibly be paused, but there have been no pause. Teachers and staff are going to be trained in two weeks on DEIB, and then the first week of school, our kids are going to get half days so teachers can get more indoctrination on CRT. Mr. Vaynerjack serves on the West Michigan region of Massa, which provides professional development to targeted Michigan school leaders. Mr. Brian Davis is on the executive board, and I recently watched one of his Zoom trainings to other superintendents on how to get their school boards to buy into DEIB. It was offensive, to say the least. He'll also train them at the Fall Conference. Let's examine his perspective with a recent tweet of this. Right after, right before he tweeted this, he put out an article full-on support of critical race theory. And then he said, "As a white male with privilege, power, bias, prejudice, and oppression, I commit myself to deep personal understanding to transform and hold accountable systemic impact in schools. I can't wait to share my learning and drop the stage with bring transformative change." These people aren't focused on academics for all or all is all. They're obsessed with skin color, obsessed with gender identity, and leftist agendas that tell minority students, "Don't try very hard. The system's set up against you." And tell our white students, "Don't try very hard. The system won't take care of it." This community's not going to get behind this DEIB initiative ever because Newman poisoned it with his trainings, and there's been a complete lack of transparency when it was put under curriculum in the SOAR board. There's been no transparency. But here's the thing, Newman and Davis are partially right. There's an institution that needs to be dismantled and reconstructed, this school board. By the way, questions are recalls. We're going to get a school board that listens to us and then responds to us and tells us what they think on these things individually, not as a board, but one-on-one individually, so when we go to vote for you, we can know what you think, and we can make an informed vote. It's not happening. And ultimately, we're going to have a school in place and an administration in place that doesn't hide what they're doing, make us FOIA to find out what they're doing.
Thank you for your comments. All right, I see a hand right there in the middle. Yes, I mean, yes.
Can you all hear me if I talk like this?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Dylan Landecker, and I live on 3908 Parrish Street in Hudsonville. I've been a student here at HPS, sends out to kindergartens. And now I'm an incoming freshman at the high school. Me and my family have been very involved in clubs and sports and have had a great experience growing up in this district. To me, HPS has felt safe and has been a safe place for me and my friends, where we felt heard and respected, no matter the race or nationality. But over the course of the last year, I've noticed things have been changing. Our school has become a battleground for political debates and singling out, not by other students, but by teachers. I've been, I've been, or I've seen multiple ways politics have creeped into our schools, a place where they should not be. Last year, in eighth grade English class, we started a social issues meeting. We began a book club based on different social problems. Our book group read a book called Ghost Boys. It was about a black kid getting shot by a white cop. The book told a story about how Jerome, the main character, was given a toy gun by a friend and was walking home from school when a white cop pulled up. Jerome turned and run. The white cop shot Jerome in the back. The book goes on to explain that the cop shot Jerome because he was black and that all white people are racist toward black people. It also said that the cop was found innocent because he had white privilege, as do all white people according to his book. I was being told to complete this assignment that was wrong. And at that point, I didn't feel heard or respected. The topics in this book, Ghost Boys, that all white people are racist, have privilege and power, and that all black people are oppressed, is something that's being taught right now with the introduction of DEIB and CRT by Julian Newman. Another problem that is going on at HPS is teachers expressing their personal political opinions and views to students. My friends have been told to take off Trump hat, face masks, and turn political shirts inside out while teachers are wearing clothes that says, "Protect your kids." I think I can speak for a lot of kids when I say, "I go to school and I expect my teachers to teach me math, science, social studies, history, and English, not who they voted for."
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I see a, yes, sir, in a blue shirt?
My name is Ray Hall, and I spoke here at the high school last month, and maybe my address is 7386 Alicia Drive in Hudsonville. And I asked that the board issue a policy condemning the destruction of critical race theory and all its cousins and the so-called 1619 Project. I asked that this policy also include a memo going out to all the staff, teaching staff, administrative staff, so that everybody would be informed that anybody who does do this teaching in a non-critical way would be subject to discipline, upheaval, and including dismissal. The third part of what I said was that we should have classrooms monitored. There should be some sort of system, video streaming, inviting parents to go in to witness what the children are being taught. I didn't have anything show up in my mailbox when I asked my institute today. So I can only assume that the board didn't take my remarks and my requests seriously. So I thought I would quote from a very good friend of mine. He said, "If you leave these little ones astray, it'd be better for you to have a millstone tied around your neck and be thrown into the sea." Now, to put that into context, I invite you to go down to the windmill in Holland, climb up and look at the millstones there. They're big and they're heavy. And then go to the shores of Lake Makatau or Michigan, and just imagine yourselves being cast in. I assure you, you will soon be speaking with fishes. Please take this advice seriously, because it's going to be detrimental to the children. It's going to be detrimental to the school system. It's going to be detrimental to this community. We've got to get rid of this. Other school boards in this nation have done exactly what I've requested. My final words, I said I was speaking for a friend. Please, don't mess with this Messiah. He's not called the Lion of Judah, nothing.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next up, okay, yep, I see it's coming here.
My name is Dave Chapman. I live at 5772 Cory Drive in Hudsonville. I wasn't planning to say anything, but I hear people saying, "Wear masks. Kids gotta wear masks. One mask, two masks. Teachers gotta wear masks, or everybody's going to die." Dr. Fauci says you gotta wear masks, or everybody's going to die. They're just scaring everybody to death. But Dr. Fauci doesn't say anything about the thousands of people coming across the border with the virus. They're on the bus, they put them on the bus, and drive them all over the country. So you tell us that we gotta wear a mask because everybody's going to die? Biden is letting these hundreds of thousands come in here, and he doesn't care. He doesn't care, nor does half of Washington. And they tell us we gotta wear masks, we gotta stay cooped up in our house and all this garbage. And Obama has a big party. Everybody's there. Two, three hundred people, he's going to have seven hundred. Do you wear masks? So all these elite people don't wear masks, don't care about all that, and us little keyons, we gotta wear masks. It's control. I'm tired of it. Very tired of it. They're lying to us.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, next, yep.
My name's Amy Wiger. I live at 3829 Black Creek Drive in Hudsonville. I also am not planning on taking these lines, but I want to thank the board. I've been part of multiple boards in the primary area of this county, this job. Secondly, my passion is within the disability community. I have some down to me, I'm trying to. And honestly, this is our first year as Hudsonville Public Schools. We both are going to the eighth grader from private school to go over to public school because of intolerance within private school. DEIB is not just about race. DEIB is about diversity. Diversity is not just race, it's religion, it is disability. It is a whole spectrum of differences. So when we're continually just focusing on the race factor in DEIB, there are kids with disabilities within this district that do not feel safe in the building. There are kids that are different religions that do not feel safe in the building. There is a whole spectrum of students that walk into this building every day and do not feel safe in the environment that they're in. And there is absolutely no excuse, as parents, as a community, for any of us to make excuses for that. So thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I see, again, they're working around, I see a hand way in the back there. Waving back and forth, so.
Hello, my name's Connie. I live in Jamestown. If you want further address, I can tell you later. I wasn't going to speak either tonight, but I'd like to let you know the definition of segregation. And this is according to Merriam-Webster Dictionary. First, the act or process of segregating the state of being segregated. Two, the separation or isolation of a race, class, or ethnic group by enforced or voluntary residents in a restricted area, by barriers, by social intercourse, by separate educational facilities, or by other discriminatory means. B, the separation for special treatment or observation of individuals or items from a larger group. So that's pretty simple to find. People do not join the Hudsonville community to be segregated. It is wrong. You may sit and look at some of these reports that are out there, and there's reports on both sides. People have done their research, and other people have done their research. All we do is read it, same as you. You do not go and do your studies, you do not do your thesis on it. We are reading other people's opinions just like you. It is up to us to decide what is best for our household and for our family. So I'm just going to let you know my two cents. Again, segregation is wrong. What you are considering into this community is wrong. I don't care if you cover it up with four letters or three letters. It is wrong. You have not experienced it. Honestly, I've not experienced. I am blessed and highly favored of the Lord. So I'm just going to let you know that right now. I do not want to see my child being segregated. I do not want her taught being segregated. She is created in the image of God, and that is what we're teaching her. Now, if you think this is a concern for the community, give the parents the materials that they need or you think they need, because this type of junk comes from the heart. It comes from the soul of the parents in that household. This is a learned activity when they're little. So if you want to make a big change, a lasting change, educate the parents, put the materials out there for them to choose, and let them teach the children in the home. The reason I'm saying that, because I have a totally different opinion about masks and this COVID thing. I left the medical community last October. I was a registered medical assistant. The way people are owning these masks are totally wrong, and I'm sorry. I respect your position. However, N95 masks are supposed to be fit-tested. I have been fit-tested for N95 masks. The way people are donning them, you're supposed to wash your hands, put them on, wear them one time, wash your hands again, take them off, and discard them. One-time use. So those cannot be enforced. About this COVID thing, guess I know my time is up. There was discrepancy between them and our home for one child of ours, because we're telling them what we believe and what the facts are. I wear a science Olympiad shirt. And I was teaching her about the science, because everybody in our household had COVID. Yes, I know the virus is real. It is not a joke, but everyone is affected differently. We have immunity. We have T cells, we have antibodies. We have these as memory. CDC is forgetting the people who have survived it. Please don't let that go uncounted for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, okay, so see a hand here, right?
With my junior year quickly approaching, I'm excited to be back in in-person learning. However, after hearing that masks are not going to be required this year, I've become incredibly nervous about the thought of how this school year is going for my peers. I know and understand that most, if not all of us, are over-wearing masks. It's been well over a year that they have been a part of our everyday essentials. With that mean that means that over a year's worth of data and research backups the facts that masks do work and are the most effective way to slow and prevent the spread of COVID-19. So I'm wondering why I should have to stand up here at all. I should not have to fight for my safety in my school. I'm also wondering why my school board and superintendent, who claims to care so much about education and safety, are acting in such a hypocritical way. You pointed out that the reason there were so few school-related interventions last year was because of the safety measures put in place. Without every person in that in-school being masked, what is supposed to protect my peers who are unvaccinated without a choice? What is supposed to protect us from the Delta variant, which we know can affect those of us who are vaccinated? How many of my peers and teachers have to get sick and miss weeks' worth of instruction? I know that when I go back to school, my focus will not and cannot be solely on completing my classes and preparing for the SAT, because I'll constantly be worrying about COVID more than I was last year. I'll be hoping that my teachers don't get sick. I'll be hoping that I don't get sick and bring it home to my family or have to miss days. And I'll be hoping that my friends, who don't have a choice to get vaccinated, don't get sick. The spread of this disease could be easily avoided, and I'm hoping that you all remember that each time a kid gets COVID from school, that is on your case.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, I see a hand over the other side.
Lauren Nightcamp from Hudsonville. I'm reading on behalf of Christy Heiser, a taxpayer and parent of recent graduates. I am totally against the DEIB and CRT being in our schools. I think you could have looked into how to bring respect to each other without bringing any kind of race into it. I recall residents from the last meeting who were born and lived in other countries that emphasized race and how happy they were to be in America. To use the public school classroom as a platform to endorse or teach your way of thinking should not happen. Public school is for a teacher to educate the kids. Teachers that express their political views should not be tolerated in the classroom. I have had numerous conversations with my kids about how teachers have ridiculed students for wearing certain hats, T-shirts, or even the American flag. While we put in our kids' minds determines what comes out of their work, what comes out in words and action. You, as a school board, ideally should reflect the local community. Don't let the teachers and teaching and training of Julian Newman into our schools be as teachers and staff. On my behalf, I would like to thank you, each of you, for your service. I also want to thank those of you that have taken the time to educate yourselves beyond what you have been told, but also to me, constituents, and other. beyond what you have been told, but also to me, constituents and other taxpayers of this community. Thank you for doing what you were elected to do. Many have been praying for you all week, not only to have courage to stand up for what is right, but to have the wisdom to know what is right. And that is not the way of this world and this worldly culture. I also want to thank teachers who are stuck between a rock and a hard spot. These teachers that know there is so much going wrong in the school system, but want to keep their job for the sake of why they became a teacher, to speak children. Thank you to the teachers that remain professional and neutral. Thank you for being someone that I would want my children to look up to in a professional manner. That being said, we have many teachers and staff that do not fit the bill of neutral education. I'm gonna read two pages out of a book requested by an elementary teacher. This is Ruthie. She's a transgender girl. That means when she was born, everyone thought she was a boy, until she was old enough to tell everyone that she's actually a girl. Girl is Ruthie's gender identity. Non-binary is a helpful word that can describe a kid who doesn't feel exactly like a boy or a girl. This is Ruthie's friend Alex. Alex is both a boy and a girl. When Alex was born, everyone thought Alex was a girl, but Alex is both a boy and a girl. That is Alex's gender identity. These are not neutral teachers. Allowing them to push their ideologies and agendas are a danger to our children, a danger. Please keep our schools and our communities safe. Please do what you were elected to do.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, another, I see a hand right here in the front.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Saqula. I live in Hudsonville, and I actually have kids in the Hudsonville Public School System. I thank each and every one of you for all you do, for all your support for our children. I mean, that is why we are here, right? For all of our children. I keep hearing talks of unity at each and every one of these meetings, and yet see no examples of unity at all. So today, I am here to keep encouraging you all to embrace the DEIB and NCL training for the staff at Hudsonville Public Schools. I am not sure what horror people are in such fear of. Diversity, which is a noun, meaning the state of being diverse, variety. The practice or quality of including or involving people from a range of different social and ethnic backgrounds, and of different genders, sexual orientations, et cetera. Don't we all want that for our children? Equity, noun, the quality of being fair and impartial. Don't we want that for all children? Inclusion, noun, the action or state of including or being included within a group or structure. The practice or policy of providing equal access to opportunities and resources for people who might otherwise be excluded or marginalized, such as those who have special disabilities and members of other minority groups. With the hundreds of children with disabilities in this school district, isn't that what they deserve? Belonging, noun, an infinity for a place or situation. Again, who doesn't want that for all children? Social, adjective, relating to human society. The interaction of individuals or the group, or the welfare of human beings and members of society. Emotional, adjective, relating to a person's emotions. Do you not want kids to understand being social and how to do it properly, or understand how to vocalize their emotions in a healthy manner? If we truly aren't here for our kids, and all kids, that aren't even ours, and truly want unity, we need to go back and ask ourselves what we are afraid of. Change, differences, these things are all important when educating and grooming our kids from the real world outside of this Hudsonville bubble. I keep hearing we do things at home, but from the behavior I see amongst a lot of these kids and people at these meetings, these things and discipline are not being thought at home. So then who shall help teach these to our children? Unity does not mean that form your own group of taxpayers, but only allowing like-minded people into that group. We are all taxpayers and have a say in what happens in our community. Unity does not mean we all wear the same colored shirt so you know who your so-called allies are and who are your so-called enemies. Is that what we are wanting to show our children what unity is? I would assume most of you would say no. I am all for, hopefully someday in the near future, that the entire room is able to come together and truly unite for what it stands for in all of our kids and stop having this us versus them mentality. I would gladly have a cup of coffee with anyone on the board, with Doug or even anybody in this room, to have a grown-up, educated conversation of how we and local communities can get for the kids. Because that should always be the number-one focus in these meetings at home and in these public schools. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your comments. I see a hand right here.
Keith Mydicker, 3908, Erie. It's a lot of emotion here tonight, and so I implore you to listen to the reasons why we are opposed to the direction Dr. Bader Jaxson brings in this school district with the DEIB program. It is not an emotional response to something new. It is not a result of being uneducated about DEIB. It is not a result of our unconscious bias. It is a direct result of a philosophical difference about the world and how to make it better. I've taken the illustration from this week. Oregon just suspended required it to be proficient in reading, writing, and math. Now, put aside how ridiculous it might seem to consider that for Hudsonville. I understand their reasoning. Their thought process is the same one that Julie Newman has, and that is being taught in our DEIB program. The thought process goes like this. Racism is everywhere, and is a reason for all problems of black and brown kids. White people are all privileged and implicitly or explicitly racist. All current institutions are established for white people and not black people. We want equitable graduation rates for people of color. Any gap in those rates is a result of systemic racism. Therefore, it is racist to require proficiency in subjects, which leads to lower graduation rates for blacks. If you ascribe to this line of thinking, the results make sense, even if it's shocking. Because that part is actually results in worse results for people of color. This policy encourages employers in Oregon to question if a black high school student can read or write. That's the result of it. They don't think all that through. This June working group meeting, Dr. Bader Jaxson said you would hit pause button and reevaluate Julie Newman's and the program going forward. Did you guys meet as a group to discuss that? What were the results of that? What was your discussion like? We have a default answer because teachers are all scheduled for their DEIB program training with Julie Newman. Are you board members of one mind with Julie Newman? Do you support his belief system? Are you proud he represents you in front of our teachers as the face of our DEIB program? Are you willing to defend his public, positive positions? Do you even know what he's going to teach to our teachers? We don't know your positions. They have been absolutely silent on this issue. We need to take a stand. We need to take a position individually and publicly. And if you care about the future of Hudsonville, you need to do it soon. We have finally forced the sliver of transparency through the Freedom of Information Act. Are you confident that you will be pleased what we find? It will be made public. This speaks to you. This is not the training we should be giving our teaching staff. I implore you to take a stand, stop the current direction of DEIB, and work with Dr. Bader Jaxson on his destructive way. And the white, the yellow shirts are to represent the truth that these two groups are not equally represented in the community. This position is the one represented by the minority position.
Thank you for your comments. Um, another, I see a hand right here.
My husband tells me not to get up and say anything. I'm already in a bag of drugs right here. Anyway, my name is Trish Williams, and I have my boys by drive. I have three kids in the school district. I am the minority. This is who I am, but I belong here in my boys' count, my kids' count. And Doug, I apologize for the email I sent you on Friday, too. Um, thank you for responding very kindly. I just want you to know that I care about all of your kids. I don't want any of us to get sick at all. I don't want my kids to get sick. I have friends whose kids got sick, very sick. I have friends who got very sick. People who are bad. I just want you guys to think third part about what responsibility you have for your kids and their health. And we use, my friend over there is a nurse, and she wore the mask for this. My daughter, fifteen years old, my kids are not. They did not carry one bit. High school, they didn't carry a bit. It's not a big deal, but if you can save a life, it might be.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, yes, on the, yes, sir, standing.
My name is Robert. I live in Jamestown with my wife, two boys who are in high school. We moved to Hudsonville because we thought it was awesome. We moved here before our kids were school age because we wanted to go to Hudsonville schools. They're just about done. I have a senior who'll start here in a couple weeks, a junior. We're glad they're almost done. I don't know how much more of this I can take. All that said, I wanted to share with you a brief story. So I received a phone call from my son at work shortly after 11:30 in the morning, earlier this spring. I answered the phone, but my son wasn't there. Instead, another man responded to me. Okay? It happened to be the school liaison officer. He said that Brad was in an accident and was unconscious, and he was holding his neck. This was on a half-day. Um, I'm cynical, so I'm gonna say perhaps it was a half-day where we were learning about CTE for the teachers while the students were off. A fellow student had pulled out in front of him, leaving the Meyer gas station. Uh, he said that my son was unconscious, and he was gonna be transferred to the hospital, and I should beat him there. He used to say I beat the ambulance to the hospital by quite some time. They had plenty of time to sit with my thoughts. When they finally wheeled him in, he was unconscious still. Or again, I don't really know. I don't wish the feelings I had on that day to any parents. But he's still with us. And in the next few days, he was quite overwhelmed with the care you see from those first responders, especially the officer who was directly there on the scene, almost immediately. I guess he was right there. Uh, he asked to order a shirt online that had a flag with the blue line on it. Most of you are probably quite familiar with it. He wore it to school proudly. When he came home to the house after school, as we talked to him about his day, as most of us concerned parents do on a regular basis, the recap of his day consisted of only one story. And that was that a teacher asked him if he knew what that shirt meant. He said, "Yes, I know exactly what it meant." "It means I support people who wear this. It potentially saved my life." And the teacher corrected him and said, "Oh, no. That shirt stands for police brutality." My other son was contact traced four times last year. Spent more time on a computer than in school. He's one of the best GPAs in his class. At some point, we have to get past the nonsense, get back to read, write, and arithmetic. All those classes that I barely passed as a kid. And as a second-generation immigrant, I want my kids to thrive in. And I think most of us as parents feel the same way. Now, I honestly don't expect us to change the views of anyone sitting on this table any more than you should expect us to change our views with anything that you've been telling us all the time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, um, I see a hand, yes. In the glasses? Yes, yes.
I am from East Cape, New York, I live in Jamestown. Every month we come here. We share the disturbing things going on in our schools. Last month, we've heard from thirty-one people, one who grew up in Cuba and one who grew up in Russia. There were parents of minority students who said they came to school for a quality education and did not want special treatment for their children. We even heard from a very well-spoken 2019 graduate who was wondering what has happened to Hudsonville High School. She shared that her sister has transferred elsewhere for her senior year. This month, we've uncovered a post from a math teacher at Baldwin Street Middle School boasting that. On May twenty-five, she started her class with nine minutes and twenty-nine seconds of silence for George Floyd. She finished off that post with a Black Lives Matter hashtag. Now, on Twitter, she posted that focusing on getting the right answer is evidence of white supremacy. We have a student report of another Baldwin teacher who has eagerly and repeatedly professed her favorite pronouns, especially in the boss family. Recently, two emails have been received from teachers that have included their preferred pronouns. As more and more of this critical race theory and LGBTQIA indoctrination show up in HPS, parents and grandparents and neighbors and friends are asking, "What is going on?" We know that parents were shut out of schools for eighteen months, weaved through while we were gone, but what else? We know that mainstream media and Big Tech, Big Tech, have become operatives of the Democrat Party and its companion, the National Education Association. Here is NEA's agenda written in 2019. Number one, teach white fragility. White people are unable to handle people of different color, lesbians, bisexuals, transgenders, queers, intersex, or asexual. This must be pushed wherever and whenever context and expense allows. Number two, promote Black Lives Matter. Here's a picture from the Ottawa Area Intermediate School District website, a resource for our teachers. January is queer organizing month. November celebrates the Trans Day of Resilience. Number three, teach climate change. NEA will provide resources and lesson plans. Number four, end criminalization of border crossings. Number five, report on the negative effects of charter schools. Number six, expand professional opportunities for the gender sexuality alliance advisors. Number seven, lobby for LGBTQ curricula. Number eight, lobby for the Equality Act. Mandate, this will mandate letting boys on drill sports teams in their restrooms and locker rooms. Businesses, schools, and medical professionals will be forced to accommodate the ideology that has no basic truth act. Doctors must perform body-maening surgeries. Schools forced to hire men who dresses women. Number nine, lobby for the right to abortion. Number ten, acknowledge US illegitimacy. Number eleven, end white supremacy and English-only culture. Do these things sound educational goals, like educational goals to you, are these Hudsonville's goals? There is one goal that NEA did not agree. The agenda item was this. The National Education Association will rededicate itself to the pursuit of increased student learning in every public school in America by putting a renewed emphasis on quality education. And NEA makes student learning priorities of the association. That action was defeated. This indoctrination is like dirt and poison and for children, and you cannot allow it.
Thank you for your comments.
So this is the last meeting before school starts. I've been here since May. I've shared what I've learned, and I haven't heard from the majority of the board. Um, thankfully, there's a couple board members that are willing to have open dialogue, and I appreciate that. What I've included in that folder is emails that I needed, I had to obtain via public records request FOIA. I've had every emotion when I've come here and spoken in front of you, but I actually feel peace now because I know exactly what is happening, and it's in that folder. So let me recap. The strategic plan was based on the surveys and the focus groups. And when we first got wind of that, we looked at the surveys and focus groups, and we saw that there was nothing about DEIB in those. Now, I know every single one of you board members voted for this DEIB goal, and a lot of you have told me that it was based on those focus surveys. Well, there's nothing in there for DEIB. So I challenged some of you to think about, okay, if there's no justification, no evidence, oh, yes, you saw comments that Mr. Gardner's marketing company told me had no statistical significance. You saw me, why you voted for something that you didn't have any evidence that you were asking for? So that was one thing that I mentioned. You guys are all familiar with Mr. Gardner's comments to me about the focus being on predominantly white districts or Lily White District of people. Which if you look that term up, anti-black campaign back in the day, when he worked for our community. And I know you've talked about Mr. Gardner's role. It's a huge impact. In the surveys, which you're telling me is. So next was we asked for the materials that were being taught by Julian Newman. Both were declined. And I know some of the board members here also asked for the materials and were declined. We know there was training with the ministry, we know that. These emails will show that. We know that there's a, um, strategic plan for the teachers, for school and the week. Okay? So my question is, why are you hiding it? That's what it feels like. Regardless of, if you're not, just put it out there, Dr. Vanderjack. The reason I said I'm at peace is because I'm not sending my daughter to HPS. There is no way. And I have lived for this entire life to have a child and send her to Hudsonville. I don't know why. I went to Genesin, you guys were the rivals. I was like, for some reason, Hudsonville is always the best. Don't try to face that against your opponent. On January twenty-eighth, on January twenty-eighth, Toddle asked Dr. Vanderjack to make a few comments on CRT and Julian. You talk a lot. I have the transcription available for you, but I, I read through that several times and I could not figure out the clear and concise direction that you were going, right? So that's why we have the FOIA. And what I found is while you were making those comments and saying, I hear the valid concerns of the parents in this community, that same month, you were contracting with Julian Newman on a, to, to have him perform consulting services for the school year twenty-one, twenty-two. That email is in there. And the school proposed fifty thousand dollars, and this is on top of the twenty-four thousand dollars that you already paid, fifty thousand dollars more for the school year. Same month that you made those comments and even three business days that you made those comments, Mandy Thomas was reaching out to Julian and saying, hey, I'm gonna send that agreement over to you. The email is in there. So sir, you were not truthful with those comments because if there was a pending contract, you should have shared that. Because I think all of us, we just want to know. We just want the information so that we can make an educated decision for our families. If we don't agree with it, fine, let it go. I made that decision, but there's still families that you don't have the ability, you know, they work, they don't, whatever, whatever reasons. We just want the truth. So finally, well, not finally, we're on time, okay? I got more. So some of the people on here is they, they have the email addresses for who the committee members are in the DEIB. I notice a parent's on here. I don't know if they're staff members, but I know a parent asked to be on this DEIB committee meeting and she said no because she wasn't a staff member. But I can tell you that some of these people on here are not staff members. Why is this important? Because this meeting had a parent breakout session. And then Mandy followed up with Julian and asked, we wonder if it might be helpful to know more about the broader conversation of, of the parent breakout session and the context of some of the action steps such as using their voting power, attending board meetings, and directing clear communication from administration. So basically, the school is facilitating a parent group to talk about how they can use their voting, voting powers. That does not seem like a school's position, a school should be, that's, it's not your swimming lane, okay?
Yeah, we did give you some.
So all of you, have fun.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Mindy Van den Huvel. I live in Hudsonville. I have four kids at Hudsonville. I'm disgusted with our board. I'm disgusted with so much going on here. You've been elected to represent us, us. Neither people have elected you to respond to us, to look at us, to pay attention, to respond to emails, to not look bored, ask how you're at a meeting, to look in the eye when we're speaking to you, to understand that we are the taxpayers funding you. You reflect us. If you don't like it, then leave. By all means, please resign. I'm asking for all of you to resign or take a stand. Take a stand for our children. Take a stand. Your community is behind you. The community wants you to listen to us and to make it active. Active listening is what we teach our children. Action speaks louder than words. Our words are loud. We've been saying them for months, months upon months. Masks and medical decisions are a personal choice, personal. The ninety-eight percent survival rate, no matter if you're eighty-five and decrepit or if you're four years old and in great health, ninety-eight percent. You protect you. The school has nothing to do about your children. You protect your children and your family. That is your decision. If you want to wear a mask, go for it. You want to get a vaccine, go for it. That is your decision, not my decision. Don't put your stuff in someone else's place. Same for the board. Don't put your stuff in someone else's place. I know, Dr. Vanderjack, you had a meeting this morning with all those, uh, busing people. And there was a great gentleman there schooling you on exactly what public transportation was and that school buses are technically in the law, not under school or under public transportation. So why are they wearing masks on the bus to go to school and not wear masks? You mentioned haphazardly that you fully accept masks will be among all students and all staff very shortly. I certainly hope not. I certainly hope all parents, when you throw those kiddos out, you should not be masked. It is not going to help. It is a virus. Viruses happen. We have so many different viruses. You cannot protect every single individual. You claim they're protected, want to care about all our children. What about my four children? My four children don't want to go to school in a mask. They know the risk. They're understanding the risk. They accept the risk. So do we. If a mask protects you, feel free to wear it. Don't push it on other people. We're here to educate. And again, I want all of you to seriously consider resigning. There are so many people willing to take up a spot, willing to stand up, willing to listen to the community. I had so much better prepare, but I didn't say any of it. I hope you all have a great time.
Hi, my name is Brett. Um, I'm in Jamestown, I'm at St. Mary's and, um, eighth grade and tenth grade coming this year. And separately, I am now part of the university, and I'm working to, and I have a yellow shirt on and I do not match the color of most people in the country, so I'm really nervous about it right now. Um, and my kids are really nervous going to school right now. So first, I want to thank each and every one of you guys for taking a stand, for understanding that this district is broken and that it does need to be fixed. Um, the DEI work, I know, was created because there were students at the school that did not feel safe. We are not at the school, or my kids are not at the school, learning math, reading, English, and the other core curriculum that you guys are all mentioning. That's where our kids want to learn. No. Our kids are at school having things thrown at them, giving, I mean derogatory terms throughout the entire day. That is what my girls are going through. Having social media, of course, makes it ten times worse because they are told what they are, what they are not. And behind it is always Republican Trump office. So now my kids associate everything, Republican and Trump and everything else with racism, with white supremacy. And I hate that because I have a lot of white friends and white colleagues that I genuinely care for and I love. And I know not everyone is like that. When this DEI was formed, it was because our kids wanted to learn just like your kids without having the stress that they experience every single day because they do not look like you guys. That's just a fact. They don't. And many of these kids are coming to school with the same ideals that their parents have. So it's get rid of DEI, get rid of everything that could possibly make another kid safe. Get rid of it.
No.
That's get rid of it.
No.
If you can make another kid safe, it's best to get rid of it. You said, I am the majority. You work for us. You represent us. You need to make decisions for us. I am a taxpayer too here in Hudsonville. I am too. I have a voice as well. And my voice may not be as loud or as, as some people, but it's still a voice. And I still would love to protect my girls just the same way I would love for you guys to protect your kids. I want to protect all kids. I want every kid to be able to come, go to school and say, we're doing art and music and have a normal, typical student. But that is not.
We agree.
So be quiet for a minute. That is not the reality for every student. And if you could pause for one moment and just open your eyes to say, you know what? I know what my kids are experiencing. Is there a chance that there are other kids that are not having this same experience? And if it is, how can we make it different? How can we make it better? Dr. Vanderjack, I applaud you for, I don't know, five, ten, fifteen times I have seen your communication come out. We are not teaching CRT. CRT will not be a part of our curriculum. Over and over and over and then we come to the board meetings and it's, we don't want CRT. And I just wanted to say, he just said, we are not having CRT. Now it's hard, but.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but we are.
I know, and I know that some of the yellow shirts receive six minutes, nine minutes, and now my. I'm not, I am not trying to make a big deal out of it. I see the smirk, I see the rolling of the eyes throughout the entire board meeting. And all I want is for my girls to feel safe in Hudsonville. All I want is for other students to feel safe in Hudsonville. My girls are not from third world countries like comments that were made previously. And the couple that I know that do have an adopted child do not look at them as you should be lucky you're in Hudsonville. They love these kids and they want them to feel safe as well. Unless, if we could work together to build a safe community for all students and not ones that just look like you, I think we'd be able to, I think we'd be able to build a healthier, safer, happier community because I don't want anything more than what you have. I don't want my girls to have anything more than what you have. And I don't want my girls to take anything from you and I don't want anyone to take anything from my girls. If that's asking too much, then maybe this isn't the district for you. I'm not sure, but I'm not gonna get ran away. I'm not gonna allow my girls to get run away.
This division is what they're causing.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, yes, in the front row.
Okay, like many, I wasn't planning on speaking. Thank you. That should not be okay. Um, anyway, my name is Kelly German. I live on Everson in Loli Woods. I moved to Hudsonville to get my daughter into Hudsonville school. Doug, we talked right out of here. You guys talked today. Um, we loved our first year. It was great. Unfortunately, the pandemic put a big curve in it. Um, while I look like the majority of Hudsonville's ideas aren't always set the same way, um, my daughter is a severe, extremely brittle asthmatic. She struggles on the regular, does the cold. I've almost lost her, more than once. She has been virtual for the last year and a half and she so deeply misses the school that we moved here for. And it, her specialist, Dr. Shuen, he, after pulmonary, has told me that if Hudsonville does not implement masks, she may not be able to join schools with her peers. Now, she's an only child. And some of you who may be only child parents know that that peer interaction is so, 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 so important. And I may be able to help teach second grade math, but I cannot replace peer interaction. She deserves to be safe in her school. She deserves face-to-face interaction. A school protects kiddos that have food allergies. Why can't we protect the kiddos that have issues with their immune system? She takes enough steroids on a daily basis that an adult male would take. Her immune system takes a blow on the regular. I get that it's my choice to send her to school or not. But I also would hope that some of you parents can see past the inconvenience of a mask and teach your children that it's keeping others safe too. I, her parents in this community made comments of the week will just be weeded out. For whatever your kids. I don't want that to happen. I have been closely, my daughter, I've met her later many times. I don't want that to happen. I am a former first responder. I have worked in the medical field many years. I've also worked on a burning net where I have spent hours helping burnt people have their dressing changed with an exact mask to one of these for hours on end in humid, hot, hot rooms. And I survived. And if we tell our kids that it's gonna be okay, it's gonna be fine. My asthmatic daughter has worn a mask the entire pandemic. Her oxygen level has not dropped once, I can tell you that. So please, just when you think about this school year, think about masks as a way to help kids like mine be able to feel normal in a classroom. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anything else that can be added?
Hi, my name is Yvette Flowers. I live at thirty-five, I need to press drive in Hudsonville. And my problem with DEIB is that we're already seeing the problem here in this room. We already have students, one on one end, one on another end, and we have parents wearing yellow. We have parents, I guess, on the other side. I don't know what color you're wearing, if you are at all. And so my question for you, Dr. Vanderjack, and the board as a whole, is what do you plan to do with the, I forgot, I think it's seven thousand students that will be coming into the school district this year and have these different opinions? We see it already. I don't think it's half and half. Maybe it is. Maybe it is, and maybe there's just more yellow here tonight than others. But these opinions are going to come to the students, to the school building. I worked at South Elementary for eight years before staying home as a mom to my children. And I know I'm gonna lose credibility here by quoting a verse from the Bible, but I guess DEIB, part of that is inclusion. So can I include a Bible verse? So I always ask my child who attended kindergarten at South last year and was probably, very unfortunately, coming home this year. Um, anytime something happens in our home, my children know it. I say, the fruit of the spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, faithfulness and self-control. And they rattle it off like that. And there is not one single argument or problem that happens in my household that can't be solved under any of those words. And I know it's from the Bible and I know that's my prerogative to teach that to my children. And also, working at South, I know I'm not naive enough to, to see that there are children that go home to homes that are much different than what my children go home to. There are children that go home to homes without parents or homes with older siblings taking care of them or they don't have food or they don't have the same privilege that my children do have. But that doesn't mean that we can't teach just these good qualities that aren't included in DEIB or CRT. We're, we're already divided. We might as well take, you know, equity and inclusion out of it because look around. I mean, people are booing, people are crying, people are swearing at each other, people are shouting at each other. It's pathetic. And we're the adults. What are we gonna do with our students? I, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is. I will fear it's one because I love Hudsonville. And it just boggles my mind that people could look at all of these things that you presented earlier, uh, Dr. Vanderjack, about all these new buildings that are going up. And I'm like, how can you not see opportunity, no matter who you are? We are truly failing our students to source, if we look around and give them the attitude that there's nothing for them at Hudsonville. There is something for every student in Hudsonville to do. You don't like sports? Go be a part of the arts program. We're completing our arts building. You don't like arts? Go be a part, for peace sake, be a fan, be a super fan, be something. We've got a teacher. We've got to teach our students that, that they have the choice to be whoever they want to be, to soar and be part of this community. And quite frankly, we're being a pathetic example of it. And I'm really sorry to say that, but it's just so frustrating to watch. It's frustrating to be a part of.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. We appreciate that. Okay.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. First in my day. I'm living in Georgetown, Florence. Can you read me address later? I'm sorry. Um, and I'm just going to keep it low three. Uh, I'm going to build on one of the packet information that you have in your packet, I guess. Um, you may recall, I spoke via Zoom in May. I'm a bit of a consumerist, I've heard. My southeast Michigan transplant over here. Love it. And what I found most interesting that I'd like, and I have lots of questions on, hopefully you guys can address, is one of the attachments in your packet is from an email sent from Manhattan County to Julia Newman, acting at label DEIB meeting 11/9/20. Sorry, I'm shaking. As I read through this, it looks like it's quantitative and qualitative, I'm sorry, it's qualitative research. And it looks like it's themes that are from past origin story, things like white, small town, homogeneous, HRT, colored line, current story experiences, racism, conservative, privileged power, easily offended. Um, and then future is embedded in what we do. Does this mean curriculum? Diversity reflected in curriculum, construction of staff. What does that mean? Resources intended for a diverse audience. I share this with the public because they deserve to know it. Um, I don't know the context of it, rightfully so, to be frank. But I would like to know who was in this meeting? And it certainly feels like we're being profiled. I don't identify with what I was thinking of this, other than maybe white. Okay, but I am Greek, mainly. So I don't identify with it. So who was, who was there in this meeting? And was there a diverse representation in the meeting? Did we have diversity of thought at the table to come up with this? I say this a lot, but the crux of the issue is really around where are we spilling this from? It feels like it's a hazard card because we're told this from surveys. We adjudicated the surveys. It's not there. And we ask that you resurvey and a clear picture of the data. Maybe bring, I mean, I can't say this now because I don't know who was in this meeting, but maybe bring a diverse group of parents to the table. Um, and maybe you could.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Okay.
How are you to give me credibility? I hope you can get past. In his defense, I buy dollars less because of magnifiers and I lost so many, he's told me to fit. Freaking difference. Carol Marks. My object.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your name?
Oh, one, sorry.
Thank you.
One, 4236 Creek View. I lived in the district, Tappley, taxpayer, 46 years. Carol Marks said, "My object in life is to dethrone God and destroy capitalism." And this is what's going on in our country. You already heard about the NEA. It's at the OAISB. It's at the superintendent's group in the state, in the country. I actually feel sorry for our superintendent because I know there's so much pressure. But let's remember that we have freedom of religion in this country and many people in our school who believe in God. Even if they don't go to church, even if they're not Christians, they still acknowledge God. Secularist ideology is followed by some people here. And I would just like to say that the whole point of the neutral thing is that we understand we don't own things alike. That's why we want to focus on academics. That's why we want to get politics out. We want religion out. We want LGBTQ ideology out and racism out because we don't agree. We don't have to agree. This is a school. Okay, so secular side ideology says that men can become women. Women can become men. We don't have to do that. That's ideology. God followers see anatomy and DNA. We understand there's women and men. A man and a woman having children is a basis of civilization. And that's why we have so many people that believe in it. We can't, we can't deny it. Seculars believe that black people are unfavored and white people feel superior. But God followers believe that every person is unique and valuable and that there are so many skin tones and so many combinations that have happened that are human history. It's impossible to divide people by race. We're just seeing human race. Why would we divide people? Is a white mother an oppressor of her dark-skinned husband and child? There's all kinds of dead ends to that ideology. It's got to go. I brought along a visual today. I went to WWB House. You know, people come from miles around to go to WWB. Just like they come from miles around to go to Hudsonville. I did a little damage today. In a short time, I had it. But it was beautiful. You've got a little barrage between you. But this uranium represents how Hudsonville schools have always been. Rooted. One administration after the other, year after year, and these board members, these long-term board members have been a witness, have focused on academics, on patriotism, on family, on discipline, on decorum for their teachers, protecting and nurturing the children, working with parents, watering, feeding, sunlight, sometimes trimming.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to kind of speed along here.
Um, so we've been on the same mission. And see how this, there's buzz. Your special needs kids are on here. Your black kids are on here. Your kids with funny glasses, the short kids, the smart kids, they're all on here. We didn't ever separate, start cutting people, cutting things apart to try to fix things. We took the whole, we worked together, we treat the kids as individuals. We don't show favoritism. We don't show rejection. We take our problems one by one. The current ideology pushed to the school district turns into this. I put some pond water in there. This is what happens when we start to take apart everything that we have been doing. And this might be Detroit, LA, Chicago. This is in Hudsonville. We don't need to deconstruct everything and start over. We don't need to throw it all up and start over.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to be up. Some other folks will.
I'll send you my, my steps. You're bringing back. While I'm walking back, I just want to say that one of the steps we could really take is something that South School did several years ago when I was subbing. And that was they had a fifth grader leave the pledge every morning with a beautiful.
Your comments, ma'am. Do you have any other speaker up, please?
He's not quite there. Present. I have biracial children. I'm a biracial woman. I've told you a lot about my life. Um, and I was pretty wild up when I got here tonight. And then I hear everybody in here, you know, we're all supposed to be fighting for our children, right? And so I thought, Sapiens, my dad, my greatest work. So I'll just tell you that my son, who I gave birth to, who's biracial, I gave birth to him 36 years ago. And I raised him in a white community. And did he have some issues with that? He did. But every day I told my son that it doesn't matter what color someone is. What matters is who you are and you live in America and you have the opportunity to grow up and you can what you want to be. You have the opportunity to work hard and you have the opportunity to learn what you want. No question, they learn math. Um, but we can all do those things. And I have never, once, and I will say when I moved into Hudsonville, I feel a little more conservative than I have been used to. But I've come in all directions from Hudsonville. I've never seen a sign here that says, "We don't welcome black people." I've never seen a sign that says, "We don't welcome gay people. We don't welcome transgender people." I have family members who are gay. I have friends who are transgender. But what we want to do is empower our children, empower them to be all that they can be. And I looked at a list of books that teachers can read. And I did sit in the room and I was empowering people. I'm seeing things that are going to further divide us and reduce us. And so I don't want my children to grow up and have to say, you know, wear a rainbow flag, right? Or something, or wear a Black Lives Matter shirt so that people know where they stand politically. People know who they're sleeping with at night. I don't want them to be valued on that basis. And I said a long time ago, before any of this stuff started, when my son was in school, I said, "I wish black and white people would all get together and we're all going to mix it up. We're all going to have babies and we're just going to mellow out the color." And then what are we going to have to fight about? Right? And it's, it's starting to happen. This could, this could happen. But we can teach our children at home to love and respect everyone. And that's what we should be doing. And my son, who is going to be a freshman in Hudsonville this year, who is adopted, who has a severe trauma history, who has, um, overcome so many things. He suffers from ice crisis and he has also ducked flyers. And he's probably the nicest human being I have ever met in my life. And when he was in seventh grade, he was bullied for his disability. And he was primarily bullied by kids who are athletic. Now, I could have taken out my flag. Which I kind of could do. And I could have said, you know what? This means that all athletes are bad people because they bullied my kid who has a disability. But instead, I realized that it's some people and it's in their hearts. And we can come to school and we can pass out all this education and we can indoctrinate children thinking that we're going to affect change, when really what we need to do is go home and teach our children to love and respect everyone and still hold true to their values. Because I think that we all can do that. We've been doing that in the United States for many, many years. It's, we cannot empower children to have a positive future by further suffering them and by telling them that you're not going to make it because you don't have a fair chance. Because if you come to school in Hudsonville, you will be taught to read, you will be taught to write, you will be taught math. And I don't, last time I checked, it didn't have anything to do with whether or not you were black or you were white or you were gay or you were straight.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask you to leave that.
But I'm asking of the school district, do you people up there, think about these things? Just think about them and consider what this is, what this is to the people in Hudsonville.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, other hands? Yes, right here.
Hi, I'm Anne Van Dyck. I live in the state of Hudsonville. And I just want to make a clarification here. We are coming here and saying that we are against critical race theory. I'm not saying that because we have a problem with colored people. People of different races, people of different backgrounds, whatever. We're saying we don't want Marxism brought into our schools.
Yep.
I love what she said. I think it needs to be taught at home. We teach our children to include everyone. We are totally for diversity. We're totally for inclusion. We're not for equity. It's not the same as equality. We're totally for people feeling they belong. We're also with the reality that everyone is not always going to feel like they belong. What happened to that lady who spoke earlier about her two daughters getting, given racist comments is insane. If that's happening at the school, you got to tell us. We got to be able to know this is happening and we got to talk to our kids and say to our kids, "We heard this is happening. You might not be involved in it because this is not how we treat people." I've never heard it. It's horrible. I don't want that happening to her children. And none of us feel that way. We don't. So that's, I want to clarify that we are not coming in here and saying that we want everyone to look like me. We're saying we don't want you to bring in Marxism, racism, which is what it is. It's dividing us. It's dividing right now. It's so sad. And if things like this are happening, communicate us to our parents so we know what we need to address with our children at home. Because we certainly will. We certainly will.
Thank you for your comments. Kayla, ma'am, I see a hand in the back. Yes, yes.
My name's Tiffany Burks. I am in Jamesstown. You want my address later? Um, I have an eighth grader and a fifth grader in Jamesstown. Um, my husband and I came tonight to show support to the board, administrators, staff. We wanted you to hear from people who are appreciative. Uh, we genuinely appreciate you looking out for the needs of all of our kids. It's a tough job. You have families on both sides of the spectrum. There's been a lot of talk about critical race theory, DEIB. I do believe it's important for staff to be trained to recognize racism because there's a component to education where kids have to feel safe physically and emotionally to succeed at school. What I want you to know is that I didn't know what I didn't know. I always thought that racism didn't exist anymore because I love everyone and I didn't see it. Probably much like a lot of people here. My husband is African-American. Our kids are mixed. I always said I was never going to teach my kids about race because we all have it. I realized that's not an option. My kids have experienced racism in this district. One of our children went from a girl that absolutely loved school to one that hated going to school. Why? Because she was experiencing racist comments and being treated differently from students. So racism became a conversation that we had to have with our kids. As part of that, I had to educate myself, ask questions, and be willing to expand my thinking. I do wish others would do the same. I can now see racism more often, but I still will never see it like my husband or my kids. It's important for teachers and staff to at least recognize it because unless you're trained, you'll miss it. I did. I don't know what the right training for staff is. I trust that that's what all of you will do. That's your position. That's not mine. And I really just all wanted you all to hear that we appreciate you. There are two sides to the argument. And thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other hands? Yes. I think this was the last hand I saw. Okay, so we'll cover that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Awesome. Name's Eric Dibby, 3175 Berry. Moderator, director, Hudsonville UCC, board member of Outlier Center for Pride. Uh, would you believe me if I said a tenant could marry me and wasn't actually going to speak? Uh, because that is the truth. I wasn't close to it. I was playing that I was sitting and listening. But the stories we're hearing from the people that are affected, by what happens in the schools, are very telling. And it, my heart beats. You know that. I've been up here advocating for that for years. So I want to echo their thanks. Thank you for making sure our schools are safe for all children and working for that. I will also ask that with that same goal in mind, let's add a mask man. I hear people talking all about how we need to get politics out of it. We need neutral education. Who are the ones that are opposing the masks? It's the politicians, the educators, and the infectious disease experts. The lady, the infectious disease head at Spectrum Health, the Bucks Children's Hospital, is saying they are overwhelmed with children like they have never seen. The lady, the infectious disease head at Spectrum Health, the Boston Children's Hospital, is saying they are overwhelmed with children like they have never seen. So I want us to continue that care for all children and bring that to the medical level. Let's not argue about politics. It's not about left or right. It's not about blue or yellow. It's about Hudsonville and our children. And the experts are saying we should wear masks and things. Children should be in schools, absolutely. And that's point one. Point two, they say, is they should be doing this. And that our government isn't stepping up to say, "You need to do this." They're taking the political edge of, "This is highly suggested you do this." Top-down, even Ottawa, Michigan Department, Ottawa Department, this is highly recommended. So let's listen to them as some politicians. Let's get care of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think I saw one more. Yes, sir.
My name is Carl Weerson, and I am from Genesee. I have four grandchildren attending Hudsonville Public Schools. It is disturbing to me that the superintendent of Board of Education of Hudsonville Public Schools would embrace an ideology called diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and train teachers in its principles and practices with a plan to include this in the curriculum for teaching our children the Marxist ideologies. While the words sound better than critical race theory, they are from Mr. Julian Newman, who is a student of Dr. Ibram X. Kendi, who authored books and articles on anti-racism and wholeheartedly endorses critical race theory. Their primary agenda is to indoctrinate teachers and students in what is called identity-based approaches to solve so-called systemic racism in school systems. In other words, they teach problems institutional, and solutions to these problems lie in fixing systems. Dr. Kendi went so far as to write an article in Political Magazine titled, "Pass an Anti-Racist Constitutional Amendment." For brevity, I will not read the entire proposal here, but will share part of what is written. He proposes a government for the Department of Anti-Racism. The final sentence of the proposal reads as follows, and I quote, "The Department of Anti-Racism would be empowered with disciplinary tools to wield over and against policymakers and public officials who do not voluntarily change their racial policy and ideas," end of quote. In other words, it is only the government that can fix the problems associated with racism. And everything is viewed through the lens that identifies you by the color of your skin, not the content of your character. We cannot allow such policy changes to occur in Hudsonville Public Schools. Our children and grandchildren are at the most vulnerable time in their lives and should not be taught these Marxist ideologies. There are laws already in place to ensure all students are protected from racial discrimination and that all students are afforded the same level of education in their school districts. Hudsonville Public Schools has an exemplary record of achievements in academics, special education, sports, and the arts, and a good record of inclusion for all, regardless of race, creed, ethnicity, abilities, or sexual orientation. Don't try to fix what isn't broken. I urge the Hudsonville Public School Superintendent and Board of Education to reverse their decision to implement this training. And I urge parents and grandparents to stand up against DEIB training by voicing your disapproval to the Board and the Superintendent of Hudsonville Public Schools, and seriously look at homeschooling your children or enrolling them in private school if this training is allowed to move forward.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Okay, I think that was the last hand I saw on, 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 let's get it in here.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, one more. This is the last speaker, the last hand I've seen in the audience, so.
Because I actually called the school three days ago and asked for a call back. No one called me back. I have some questions. My phone blew up this weekend over this issue. Have we ever been answered? I have a clueless, with one percent. I don't even know what's going on, you guys. Sorry. So I'm wondering, since Ms. Thompson didn't call me back in three days, didn't get a call back. All I was asked for a ten, fifteen minutes of conversation, got no call back. Well, I'm sorry, it probably was thirty minutes. But I have some questions. So since you are her boss and I didn't get a call back, I'm going to ask you my question, so I can understand what is completely going on in our school. Do we have indiscrimination and race problem in Hudsonville?
Ma'am, we're not going to address questions this evening. The best way to get those questions answered would be to set up a meeting with Dr. Vanderjack.
But these people all want to know the same issue.
We certainly understand, ma'am. We're not going to address questions this evening.
We all want to know, because if we do, we need to fix it.
Understand.
And how do we fix that?
I understand.
That's not clear, right?
Are there further? I understand. And Dr. Vanderjack is.
I actually have a question.
So he's writing the questions down, and he will respond.
Every single time there is a COVID case, letting us know that we had incident in school. How can we do not do that about racism or discrimination, so we can address it at home, so we can fix the problem? That's, that's, that's a big issue. You're all, you tell me every time that my kids have been around somebody in school that has COVID, but you won't tell me when they have been exposed to racism or discrimination? So that way I can address it with them, fix the problem, and so that way we can stop it in our schools. This is not okay. I would like to know if Mr., actually, Pastor Julian is what I know him as. So I'm wondering why the school board cannot have a meeting for Mr. Pastor Julian to first ask these questions about his curriculum, on what he's teaching? Why can't we have a meeting with him? You're not going to give him this thousands of dollars. Let us talk to him. Let us ask our questions, so we know exactly what is going on. All I want to do is just ask him questions. What, what is, what, what is this? What are you going to be teaching our teachers? What are you going to be saying? Like, what, what is your viewpoint? That's all I want to know. I mean, I have no information as to what he's going to be saying. What are you going to be teaching? I'm up there, I'm coming to you, asking you guys, and all of you here want to know the same thing, and you're not telling us. We need that information. If you want to change our minds about this, you need the information.
And we certainly understand and agree. If you can, send those questions.
A lot of fan reviews, you and I.
He will, he will return. And, and.
Why can't we not have a meeting if you have to?
I appreciate your comments, and that's, you've made a note of that, and we appreciate your comments. We understand, we understand. Other, other? Again, we passed three minutes. Again, I would encourage you strongly that please send an email to Dr. Vanderjack directly, and he will, will be with you, hold a meeting, hold a discussion with you, and. We do appreciate your comments, so, so we do. Okay, I think that was the last, okay, one more hand here. And this is the last hand I've seen, so we're past nine o'clock. So I think this is the last comment, and then we will move forward. So, yes, right here.
My name's Anna McAllery. I live in 5960, where I'm from, in Hudsonville. I have two children in high school, and my comments will be brief. First comment I'm going to address to the board. I've been in front of you this is the third time that I'm speaking. We deserve to hear from you as a unit on body. We need to know what you're saying. Because even though you want as individual, board members, now you are a cohesive body that represents the school, the Hudsonville Public School District. We need to hear from you. Just like you said, the previous speaker, address it to Dr. Vanderjack, so that, you know, your questions are being answered. I am asking you in front of everybody, Mr. Hall, to speak on behalf of the board, answer to the concerned taxpayers and voters who elected you, and the rest of the board members. We need to hear from you. We cannot, what you're showing us is disrespect. If we stand here in front of you on either side of the aisle, and we demand answers, and we give you your opinion, our opinion, and we don't hear from you, you are disrespecting the voters of this community that elected you to this role. And I'm addressing this to you as the pressing of the board. You have that duty, you have that obligation, it's in the Bible. We need to hear from you, we want to hear from you. And I would like to request that we hear from you at a public statement from all the board members, no later than next week, before school starts. We need to hear from you. The next comment I'm going to address again to Dr. Vanderjack. You have a good heart. I meant with you. Your heart's in the right place. I also want to hear from you, just like all the parents have asked here, about any kind of racism, bullying, or anything that is going on in our school district. I do not like to see a parent, no matter which color shirt she's wearing, storming out of this room, upset because her daughters have been bullied. If this is happening in our community and in our schools, that is your job, Dr. Vanderjack. That is the role of all the people that are there, and all of our teachers. Okay? So I want to hear as a concerned taxpayer and a parent of two students, what is going on in our schools? And we need to fix that, and you have the tools to do it. There's a student code. If the students need to get suspended, suspend it. If you need to send them home and be called a parent, do it. But let's not try to fix everything else, instead of addressing the disciplinary issues that are going on in our schools, if they're actually happening. They need to be addressed. Last, the twenty-three seconds that I have. I am a minority, and I said that to you guys. And I was born in a country that, that actually indoctrinates students in their school. This is not me versus you. This is, we want neutral grounds in our school. Okay? I support whatever you stand for for your kids, because we're all parents, and we all love our kids. So I stand with you on that. If your kids are disabled, or gay, or lesbian, or black, or white, or brown, or whatever, they need to be respected and loved by our entire community, by our school. I stand by you. But I am not going to have, I am not going to stand here. I already ran out of socialism once. I already ran out of indoctrination once, and I'll be damned if I'm going to let that happen to my community as a minority in this community that has been welcomed, well represented in this community, and that have never experienced, and neither have my kids in Hudsonville. But I want my kids to be frankly, to stand up for all the other kids that you guys are saying are being bullied, are being underrepresented, and are not being cared for by our school, because all of these comments here reflect poorly on the administration of this school.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. So we have a motion? We do appreciate, before we adjourn, we do appreciate and we do take seriously the comments that we, that we hear. We appreciate you being here tonight, spending the time to discuss these items with the board. It is an evolving process with us. We hear the desire for further communication from the board on this topic. So we hear you. That's something that we take seriously, and we're working on. So we, again, appreciate the comments, the sincerity, the passion around this topic, and we'll continue to work and engage with the public more on this, on this topic. So, so we hear you again. We thank you for being here this evening, and we appreciate your comments. Any, any other questions or comments from the board? Chad, any comments you want to make? We'll do a quick roundtable on the board.
I guess just thank you all for coming and your comments tonight. I know there's a lot of comments about the division and different perspectives, but what I actually see is unity and caring about our kids, all of our kids, and I really do appreciate that unity. So I know there's questions that need to be answered, but I think it's probably good if we all just focus on what it is that we want for our kids, is that we all want our kids to have the best education experience possible. We want them all to be safe in our schools. We want them to have a great year, and we want it to be the excellence that we've always had in Hudsonville, and that's frankly what we all want, us included. So I, I hope we can unify around that and go forward and give back to our kids as you.
Donna, any comments?
I appreciate the fact, Chad, that you're positive about the last six months. I've lived here my whole life. My grandfather was a school board member in nineteen sixty. My husband and I, and both of my parents, all graduated from Hudsonville. My kids graduated from Hudsonville. So I feel like that gives me a little bit of credibility. And I have to say, I am saddened and almost ashamed about some of the comments I've heard from people over the last six months. And it breaks my heart, because again, we all want to do what's right. But my kids and I have conversations all the time. They're in their thirties, and they have been out in the world, and they have told me the kind of things that they were not prepared for. And as much as some of you want to keep co-opting what we're trying to do by calling it CRT, that is not it. That is not it. And if you want to vote me out, vote me out. I am done with trying to convince people. And to address a couple things, some of you I want to apologize to. I got a new phone. I must not have set up my board email. I just moved that tonight. So if I didn't respond to you in the last two weeks, I apologize. Secondly, for those who are offended by either my eye-rolling or my penciling, my computer did not work last time. I was taking notes about what all of you said, so I could go home and think about those. So please, don't make accusations about board members unless you talk to them first, okay? That I'm just asking you to do that. Secondly, I am not feeling well tonight. I am ready to throw up, not just because of this, but I don't feel well. But I thought it was important to hear all of you speak. And finally, I hate to say it, Mr. Smith, but when people mock others who are speaking, that is naughty children behavior. And that is why we have to keep these board meetings in line. So I'm upset.
Mr. Davis?
I'm just laughing. Ken was here tonight. If you've tried to communicate with me and haven't heard from me, my phone number is available, the email. I don't respond to group emails if it goes to all the board. I leave that to Ken to take care of. If you want to email me directly personally, I respond to all of those. Thanks.
I just thank you all for being here and for stating all your comments. I am listening. I'm very good about responding to emails, and I guess we all have our own goal. We want an environment that is safe for all of our children, and it's how do, how do we get there? Because I see the division just in this room, and we have to come together, and what is the best way to do that? And I am listening to you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, can I have a motion, please, to adjourn the motion by Chad Todd? Court on Donna Stephen, on the paper to adjourn, please say yes. You all for adjourn? Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.